Educating, Informing, Serving. Fact TV, Keeping Government Honest.
A couple of things before we get started. I talked to Bill Kearns and we don't meet in executive session for the Fisher Hill situation, but I would like to move the Fisher Hill section up to floor, to the Highway Report, because we need some advice from Danny. Is that okay with the board?
Fine.
And the second thing is, Bill sent out a memo and Kathy responded, I responded, whether or not we want to talk about the CIC building. My response was, I would rather put it off, because I don't like to put things on the agenda. Somebody might be interested in listening and if you don't put it on the agenda, they don't have the opportunity. So, it's up to the board if you want to include that or not. It is not an urgency thing.
If I did respond back, I said I didn't see any urgency to it, but as long as it was sort of recent information, we could talk about it. But I see your point, I think it's fine, we hold it off.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay with that?
You're fine, Joe.
Okay, alright, so, a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So move.
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the amended agenda, say aye. Or any opposed? Okay, good. Okay, approval of the minutes of Monday, October 5th? Do we have any additions or corrections?
Some corrections, even though I wasn't there, does that still count?
Sure, why not?
On the second page, third line down, it says "sale if" for that, and I think it should say "sale is for the health." John Gregory stated this "sale if for the health." Should read "John Gregory stated sale is for the health."
Okay.
I read my own fact, because I knew it was supposed to be "is."
And then in that, on that same line farther over to the right, it says "the bids look for work in the winter." It should read "the bidders." The bidders look for work in the winter.
Okay. Are there any other corrections or additions? If not, a motion to accept the amended minutes of October 5th?
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the amended minutes of October 5th, say aye.
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 Okay.
I abstain, I was not present.
So we have 4 to 1 with it. Four yeses. Okay, the warrants, I know I signed mine this morning, they were John, myself, and Stan, so I guess we're okay. If anybody else needs to sign them, they're there.
I signed them.
Okay, good.
I signed them, after Kathy. I was the last one to sign, they're all done.
Perfect. Alright Danny, Highway Report.
So, we've been up in the Village Park trying to do that in between the rains and stuff. You know, we got more grading and still got some culverts we haven't gotten to yet. And we've been hauling sand in as they have it over to the pit. Working on the trucks to get them everything ready for the beautiful white stuff. The Village, does Village Park got its own line item?
Yes, it does.
Okay, I'll wait on that then.
Oh, no, no. Well, not really. It's kind of opening bid.
Well, I'll wait on Village Park then. So, we were hoping to do all the slopes and everything on the Village Park and have it seated, but with the weather, every time it rains, we can't move up there. So, I think for now, it's just going to be smoothed up and left for this year. We still can do the entrance way, that has to be graded out more. But I think as far as anything else in there, probably we'll be left until next summer. But it'd be, you know, once it freezes up, they're going to go in and do the logging and everything.
I think that came out really, really good.
Danny, and I thought for Danny and feedback from the rest of the group, I was thinking, once you get done, before the logging starts and freeze up, there's a, I think it's a hemlock log that was setting off to the left as you go up. I was thinking that you would put that log a little bit beyond the, across the road, a little bit beyond where the covert is. So that people can drive up and use that first part where the gravel is.
Yep.
Alright, once you get it shaped up, somebody could get in there and rip around in that, if it gets some more rain and gets soft, rip it up and fill it up with rut, and you'd like to have it freeze up smooth.
Yeah, well, if they go out there, I leveled up out in the, where the turnaround part is going to be. If they make it that far, you know who it is, because they're not going to make it back out. It's that solid. So, but no, I'm going to try doing some of the slopes and the roadway, so the water will shed off from it. And I think that's it, because before, if it rained about two days later, we could go up and work it. Now, it doesn't, you know, the rain from Saturday, Friday, we still couldn't go in today with a loader. It's just, it's too wet. So, we're just going to smooth it up and let it, so they can get in, you know, freeze it up, then they can do their logging. Probably the wood, and I mean, that was explained on the bid to firewood, it probably is going to have to freeze up to get that second pile out of there. The further one out.
Right. And I haven't told the rest of the board yet, that the conversation was, concern was with the bidder, how firm we were on that date. And, you know, told them that, like to have it all out by the first of November, but weather dependent, and we understand if it rains and it's soft, we're going to have to be flexible and give them an extension to get the wood out.
Correct.
You're talking just the firewood?
Yes.
The firewood, yeah. We had hoped to have that all out of there before the logging starts, but we may have to wait for freeze up before we can do that.
Yeah. We went up today, David and I went up today, and there is a pile right there, right after where the gravel ends. And I just, I'm loading it onto the trucks and we're just going to truck it out of there, to get that out of the way. So that'll be gone, and then I'll start smoothing up the roadway and the slope a little bit. That's all I got for that.
Okay, Danny, we have-
I don't think everybody knew that you intended to go in there and mulch that, blow the mulch on, on the banks. Probably still will, if the weather allows it, but if it stays wet like this, it's not going to happen.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to dry out enough now to go beyond that covert.
Right.
So the covert's in, and there's gravel there, I haven't gone up with a grader yet to finish that up. We're finished up the entrance up to the covert, although this year, that's no problem.
Can it be seeded just where the road, where the, up to the covert, just to sort of finish that?
We could, yep.
I mean, that's, I just think that maybe, that would help.
Yep, we could do that.
Okay Danny, we have a question for you concerning the, you know, the situation, the dust signs on Fisher Hill.
Yep.
So, the individual is supposed to make restitution and do his community service.
Yep.
So, Bill asked me to, are you willing to supervise his community service?
Well, you know, he contacted us after he got caught about that. Under good faith, he was going to come and do something for us. And he came and he signed the paperwork about volunteer or whatever for us. But he never did anything he said, so far as I'm concerned, that if he couldn't take that responsibility to show it in the beginning, I don't need to waste our, the town's time babysitting him. If he couldn't find the time before, I don't really care to deal with it.
Okay, well, I'll let Bill know, and then I guess obviously, if you're unwilling or don't want to supervise him, I guess if he's going to continue to do this, somebody else is going to have to supervise him, I don't know.
Well, he'll have to do his, I mean, if you guys want him to do the community service in Grafton, I'll do it if you're telling me to. But I just think that, you know, he contacted us and said that he wanted to come and he was going to sweep some bridges and all that for us. And he came, signed the paperwork and never called me back. You know, he just really kind of just let everything drop, so.
Bill isn't here, but when I talked to Bill this afternoon, he is required by law, by the court.
But he doesn't, he doesn't have, he don't, he doesn't have to do it in Grafton. He can do the community service anywhere.
Okay.
But they, I think they were trying to say, you know, he did the damage in Grafton, let him come back there and do it. But, I mean, that's kind of up to you guys.
Well, it's up to the board, how you want to proceed. I will tell, I will tell Bill that Danny, of his situation, where he didn't come back and do it. So, I don't know how you want to proceed. Don't mention any names and comments, just, he's going to supervise him. Kathy, go ahead.
Probably the diversion board needs to be notified on that. I think you have to get direction from them.
Okay.
There's been an email that's come out on that, and an email that asks, you know, if we wanted him or not, so. If we don't, they're sending him to another town or someplace that we'll deal with it.
Well, what is the, does the board feel, how strong does the board feel that he should do his community service here?
I think he should.
Does anybody know how many hours it is?
No.
I thought it was 20 hours, but I might be wrong.
That's what was in the email, is 20 hours.
Yeah.
It was 20.
Could Walter use them for raking leaves or something?
I don't see why not, it's just, the question is, is that, I guess the real question is, do we want to proceed and have the board notified that he needs to do his community service and we wanted to do it here in Grafton? If that's what the board wants to do, then we can have Bill send, make sure that's happened. Or if he don't care, as long as he does his community service somewhere else.
I think he ought to do it here, I mean, I think, you know, for these guys, I think at the end of the day, to wash trucks and a grader and things like that, I don't see why that couldn't happen, things like that. I know, you know, sweeping the bridges is great too, but I think there's any numbers of things that that could happen.
I agree, so, if it's okay, then I will let Bill know that we want, that, as Kathy said, notify the board and tell the board that we wanted to do his community service here if he hasn't been doing his due diligence. Okay?
Yep.
Alrighty.
I got a question for Danny. Danny, how many yards of sand do you put out to bid each year?
You guys haven't bid it for the last couple of years. I haven't tallied up the slips yet this year on what it is, but-
What was it last year?
I think we bought around 6,000 yards in last year.
Okay. Do you know, do you know how much of that you drew and how much was delivered?
We hauled it all.
You hauled it up, none was delivered?
No.
Okay, okay.
I think the first year up there, I think some of it was delivered. I think that was only the first year that we're up to the new location.
Anything else for Danny?
Well, I had some more Village Park related things and things how we were talking about Village Park. Can we just, you know, under the highway, can we do it now?
Yeah, why not, go ahead.
So, I was looking at expenses, Danny.
Yeah.
And, so here's, here's what I have. In our reserve, we have $9,043.51. We got a check from Durgan and Crowell, or Durgan, Peter Durgan, for $1,484.53. That was for the saw logs that we cut, opening up the road parking area. So that gives us a total of $10,438.4. So far, we spent $802.25 change on the two culverts. How much was the header, Danny? The concrete header?
Not 100%, but I think it's $410. That bill will have to be, it should have been already paid for, because we've had that for a little while.
Okay, so you took that out of inventory?
Yes.
Alright.
Do you want that replaced for inventory and moved to?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know if you, I'd have to look through the slips and see if that has come. Washburn's a little slow about billing sometimes. So make that bill maybe still out there, because I say, sometimes they're 30, 60 days out before they bill. But, it could have been already paid.
Okay.
Okay, and then, the roll of fabric, or the, what do you call it? The road fabric?
Road fabric.
Yeah. $309.10.
Yep.
So, 1,100, it's about $1,500 right there. Question to the board is, we would have about $8,500 in that reserve if we wanted to put any more gravel out or extend what we've done. If that worked with Danny's schedule, if the weather let him do it, whatnot. Or, we just have Danny smooth it up and secure it until after the logging is done. I'll look for Danny's thoughts, as well as the rest of the select board's thoughts, what we should or shouldn't do with that.
So you haven't got any of the bills on the gravel that we put there yet?
Oh, right, right. I had, I had the gravel there, but I, you're right, I didn't get those.
We haven't gotten them from Lori yet.
Yeah, Lori, yes, it's a soft no pit.
Right.
You're right, I don't have that, those numbers.
I guess I would, I would think Alan, that, you know, finish up what you've got at this point, and then let everything else freeze up, and then when the logging is completed, or at least the first go-round of logging, he, Tim had mentioned, it might be two winters depending on timing and things, like the last time we talked to him. And my thought is, we go ahead and do the logging, then go back up and then finish up.
I kind of agree with Stan.
Time-wise for us, that's, that's what I'd like to see happen. I mean, if we had a little time to put some more right there in the beginning, fine, but I still have three culverts I'd like to get in this year, if not, maybe four. And then we still got a lot of leaves to blow, and we have always the grading to do just before freeze up too, so.
I wasn't pushing for it, I just wanted to have this discussion, so if people say, "Well, why didn't you finish?" or "Why this?" or "Why that?", you know, everybody, everybody's heard this discussion and knows what the thinking was.
I wouldn't mind putting down like two loads, maybe three more loads beyond the covert, so that you could, they could get that first pile of wood out of there, so that, I mean, that would, that'd give them a star on, you know, what they're purchasing too. Because we're right there on the edge of them reaching that. Probably two, three loads of just bank run or something would get the log truck back enough where they could get that pile out of there.
I agree with that, yeah.
I support.
That's how we're going with it, then?
Yeah, is everybody agreed on strategy?
Yeah.
Fine.
Okay. Alrighty.
Hey Danny, before you go,
Yeah.
I noticed the other day up on 35, that new paving area, the last cut that goes, you're almost in the Chester, there's still some of that plastic liner laying on the side of the road.
Yeah. Actually, I think there's some, I forgot, there's some in the old log landing over there too.
Okay.
We'll get that tomorrow, it's supposed to be a rainy day, so.
It just doesn't look good sitting there.
No, I actually forgot all about that.
Okay.
Actually, that sign, just coming into the village, it was tipping, we straightened it up, it sets right on ledge, and now it's tipped over. That says "blind driveway ahead." Really, the tree and stuff has been cut since that sign was put in right by Gavell's driveway. I don't feel that it's really a blind driveway anymore. You can see right across there now that all that brush they took out of there. So, if you guys don't mind, I'm just going to pick that sign up and not worry about putting it back in.
Was it requested to go there, or why?
I think the state put that in under one of the grants we had years ago. I can't remember what, they called it a "high-risk roadway" or something. I don't know if you remember that, John, but 121 was part of that, Chester Hill. The corner on the Shack Curve on 35, they put them signs all in under that grant.
Yeah.
But that, there used to be a row of like, some type of a bush between Lenny Gavell's property and that driveway that goes up, so blocked the view up through there, and that's been all cut for a long time now. So I'm just going to take, pick the sign up and not worry about that. I do know that there is an issue about the speed limit signs on 121. And I talked to Bill about it, and I did order in some signs for it. If we get time, we're trying to put them up before the ground freezes, just the 35 mile an hour signs from pretty much the village all the way to the old schoolhouse there in Houghtonville.
Those are the ones that just came in?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have one more thing at the Village Park, and Danny's conversation on signs prompted my memory. I would like to see us put a sign up at the intersection of the new road that says "Village Park Access," or something like that, that designates that road and access. If we're going to have more people using the area, going to have logging, going to have activity there, it would be nice that that sign is there, identifying that road, and it has a 911 address or location, just in case there's an emergency response, it's identified. I'd suggest we have "Village Park Access" on the sign. Just my idea.
That's a good point.
You mean like a road name sign?
I would-
A green sign?
I would take, and, I mean, it's the Village Park and it's an entrance. I'd really look and see if you couldn't find someone to make one out of a wooden sign. You know, the signs where it says "Welcome to Grafton", they just, they look so much nicer than the green metal road signs we get. I mean, I think they're ugly. But I think if you're going to enter the park, it'd be kind of nice if you could find someone to make one out of wood and they router it in, kind of like the "Welcome to Grafton" signs. It'd look so much nicer up on the bank up there. I don't have a problem putting it in, but you go to a lot of these state parks and stuff, and they, you know, they use a 4x4 post and a nice wooden sign. I just think it looks better than these metal or aluminum green signs.
Well, why don't I, why don't I have Bill do a little research and see what, get an estimate and see what the thing costs and whatever?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I like that better.
The green metal ones are reflective though, right?
Yes.
So they do show up after dark. That would be my-
That's my idea.
I don't care, but I think it, it needs to be named and identified somehow.
Let's see, let's see what we can do, we'll put it on the agenda if we got to get some design or cost or whatever for the next meeting with Bill, as soon as we can, okay?
Danny, are you seeing the lines up on the Houghtonville hill?
We probably won't see them this year.
Really?
Yeah. They only come around, you know, it's like a one-shot thing, and if they don't do them early on, they don't usually come back.
Didn't they send out a memo a little while ago to make sure that all the roads were done? Didn't they question if things were done?
That was before it was paved.
Oh, it was, okay.
Yep.
Alright, anything else for Danny? If not, move on to Kim.
I don't have anything new on, we're approaching our second quarter taxes already. Um-
Quietly.
Yeah, quietly. Not much is new, I still have ballots rolling in. Probably have over 200 ballots already for absentees that have been mailed in, and more coming. That's probably it, we're still going to have elections held at the Brick Meeting House. I can't think of anything else happening. I'm underway, I'm online for, actually, yeah, that's a good one. As of the 13th, I became up online at Record Hub for my land records from book 56 to 60, I'm in 60 right now. So, we've met the requirement so far for the grant. And by the end of December, we should have from book 38 to book 60. So that's a really huge jump. And then I have a lot more I want to add to it, so. And I have applied for another grant that I'm hoping to hear. It's a minimum of 5,000, and is to help out with anything to do with elections. And everyone says to look at the big picture for upcoming town meeting, not knowing if we're going to be able to even hold a town meeting and what would it look like. So, I applied for a grant that would ask for additional help, a laptop for another location, possibly a camera or some sort of a screen, in case we have to do a virtual. Some of the clerks have been even talking about there's a possibility that the legislator wrote in that instead of having everything by Australian, by floor vote, we can change it to Australian ballot. That's a possibility too, coming up with town meeting. I don't know what it would look like with budget and moving it to an Australian, but that's something that Bill said, all this came about like Friday in conversation, so it's something Bill's going to research into and find out where are we going to be when town meeting comes, what's it going to look like?
The other thing is, and it's up to you guys if you want to talk about it tonight, is the dates for the budget meetings at the Brick Meeting House. Question is, it's middle of October and we wouldn't start until the first, or second weekend in November. Do you want to put it on the agenda for the next meeting, or do you want to pick some dates now? I mean, people might not know schedule three weeks from now, I don't know, so, it's up to you.
Yeah, I would think next meeting would be good.
Alright, I'll put it on the agenda for next meeting. Anything else?
My request is the meetings are after dark.
No, they're 6 o'clock.
As I said, after dark.
Yeah.
Budget meetings.
4:30 is going to be after dark shortly.
Anyway. Alright, if anything else, Kim, you have anything else?
No, I don't have anything else, unless you guys have any questions.
Okay. Everybody did get their budget worksheets, right?
Yeah.
Okay. If you have any questions, Kim will, with, she has very little time lately with elections, but she'll give you a couple of minutes to-
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, absolutely. Okay, who's going to open the bids? Kathy is the- Yeah, absolutely. Okay, um, who's gonna, who's gonna open the bids? Kathy is the which, who has, so you could open them up?
I got one.
Go ahead, only one?
Yep, we had two people that um, were at the bid site visit. Danny Taylor and Mark Rushton, and Mark is the only one who turned his in at three-fifteen this afternoon. I'm opening it. To the Grafton, to select board at Grafton, I would like to bid on the logs at the Village Park off Fire Pond Road. I'm putting a bid in of six hundred and one dollar. Thank you, Mark Rushton.
Sounds like the high bidder to me.
Yeah, that's, that's both piles, right? That's everything that's up there, right?
So, so, somebody wanna make a motion to accept the, the long bid or do we, do we need a motion?
Make the motion.
Okay. Second?
I'll second it.
Alright, any further discussion? If not, then um, all in favor of accepting Mark's Rushton's bid of a six hundred and one dollar for those firewood at the Village Park, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay, thank you, Mark.
Uh, how, how many cord were there there, Alan?
We, we never estimated the cords. We, I didn't wanna argue with people. I just said, here's the piles, you decide what it's worth.
Well, I understand that, but you see the piles now. I'm just curious if you have some idea of what was there.
I think there was probably close to two log truck loads, maybe.
Okay, that's good enough, close enough.
Yeah.
Okay, the next thing is, um, and it's on the agenda because we still, the constable is, is, is not an issue right now. The planning commission doesn't have any recommendations and to my knowledge, unless something happened within, within a couple of hours, there's been nobody who wants to be on the planning commission or the tree ward. So, just, it's on the agenda so that everybody is aware that we do need, eventually we need a constable and eventually, and we need a planning commission member and a tree warden at some point. So if anybody knows of anybody or whatever, pass the word. And do you wanna run another ad in the Grafton News for this, for the planning commission and the the tree warden, or do you think it's done enough?
Um, can I, can I um, instigate some discussion relative to the tree warden?
Go ahead.
Um, so I was in the town office the other day and there was a little discussion going on. Um, I've had some of the people that originally uh, offered to help with the Emerald Ashbor survey. They wanna know if we're going to do it or not. And my feeling is I hate to have people volunteer if we're, if, after they invest some of their own time and, and the select board doesn't follow up with it. It was also suggested that we not do the Emerald Ashbor survey until we have a tree warden to ask that tree warden to coordinate it or facilitate it. Not all, not all of the select board was there when that discussion took place, so I thought I would share with you and kinda get a feel for what the rest of the board feels. Um, I, I hate to waste volunteers' time if we're not going to do something with it. Um.
You totally don't.
Well, I, I, I think, I think we did, and again, Bill's not here, so I, I don't know, but I remember that we were going to do the survey of the ash trees.
What we were, and then of course the COVID came and, and that stopped it. We didn't want to put people in vehicles riding together, so um, that, that put it on hold. And then, then there was discussion, we should not do it until we have a tree warden.
Well, how does everybody feel about, you know, i- if we can get the volunteers to do it with the virus, doing it safely, should we continue to do it? Or should we wait for the tree warden, which who knows when that's gonna happen?
Well, do we need a warden in, in, so-called in charge of it? I mean, who's, who, is, is Alan heading this up? The, the actual survey itself? I mean, there has to be somebody in charge.
But we have a committee, and I think Alan was, was the chair of that committee, correct?
I think by default, yeah.
Okay. But I guess Alan is asking that, do we wanna, do you want Alan to continue and do this survey now, or do you wanna wait until we finally, and with the tree warden? I guess that's what you're asking, Alan. Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, there was some line of thinking that the tree warden was an important part of it and should be involved and probably take the lead on this. Um, and that probably not much would happen if we didn't have a tree warden. That was somebody's thinking.
Well, I think logically it makes sense that if you had a tree warden, that would be the person that would head that committee up. But I, you know, I also agree with Alan, you have this group of people that were willing to do it. Uh, but then again, if, if somebody has to be able to lead that group of people uh, down the path of, of Ash Tree County.
Sir. Alan, is there anyone in your group of volunteers that would be interested in being tree warden?
Um, I haven't specifically asked them that. I mean, they all live in town and they've, I'm assuming they read the Grafton News and they're aware that we're looking for one. I have not specifically asked or canvassed them I can do that.
I thi- I think it's a good point. Obviously, they're interested in trees and they're interested in the that type of thing. I, I think it'd be worthwhile just to uh, bounce it off of them.
Well, Alan, how about if we do this, um, give you a, a couple of weeks to contact the members of the committee to see if there's any uh, any interest in becoming a tree warden and any interest of doing the survey and we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yeah.
And maybe somebody would be willing to do that.
Alright, I'll do it. I, I'll, I'll send an email to all of them and explain that we've discussed it, well, we're looking for a tree warden, see where it goes.
Yeah, and maybe, maybe the, the group would still, might be reluctant with the virus still in, in, you know, to do something. I don't know.
You know, there might, might have two people that'd be willing to work together on the, the tree warden situation. You know, you can have a warden and an assistant or something. If two people.
Under the regulations, you can have a deputy.
Yeah.
You read the.
Yeah. Okay.
Alright, um, the next. You done with the tree warden now, whatever? Okay, the next thing is the cemeteries. Um, you all got the memo that Bill, that Muller uh, said we can dig the gravel pit. We can, we can dig for gravel. Um, I don't know where, Danny's not here, or maybe. Um, do you wanna, do you wanna talk about the other sites or the, would you like to see if you can gravel there as well? How would you like to proceed with the picking of the site?
Well, we've got the two other, we've got the two other sites and one is, you know, Houghtonville and the other is Cobb. And I went up and I looked at both of those. I have not looked at the one on Chester Road there, what's his name?
Muller.
Muller, right. I, I would actually like to see, I mean, it's gonna be harder to add property to, but I think Houghtonville Cemetery, in my mind anyway, is the one we should be concentrating on.
No, I agree with that, Stan. I looked at it, I looked at it the other day.
Yeah, I, you know, it would be easy, the one out in, in Cobb would probably be the easiest one to add, but the problem is to buy the property is fairly expensive and talking about other people buying into it, it becomes a real mishmash of of trying to divide that piece of property up. I understand where you wanna go with it. I, I just think Houghtonville Cemetery is, is the cemetery we should concentrate on. And even if we have to contact another landowner, it, it's not gonna take, these are huge pieces of property around that cemetery. And if we could just get two more acres or something associated with that cemetery in another, uh, from somebody else. I just think that's, I think it's the way to pursue it.
But the problem is, we don't know whether or not the individual was willing to donate or sell it.
I understand that. If we have some sort of a plan, you know, and give them a plot plan. Show how based on their size of their properties, how little it would impact their, their current piece of property by adding on to Houghton.
Well, we could, we could have Bill, um, you know, get the surveys.
Yeah.
And he can, uh, he can, you know, mark out an acre or two acres or three acres and put the location and then try to send her, send them a request if they would be willing to donate or, or sell. Um, I think the new buyer's there now, are they not? I think they, they bought that house, is that correct?
I don't know.
It was for sale.
No, it, it's still the same owners. It has been right along for quite a few years, Ocardo.
That's not Rodriguez though, right?
No, it's Ocardo. You're talking about the yellow house just passed. Yeah, that's Ocardo.
But the land that you're interested in, Stan, is on Parmley's.
Okay.
Well, it is.
Yeah, most of it's on Parmley's. It's right on the edge of Parmley's uh, line.
But that only goes down like a, a third of the way down along the back, at least the, the, the plot plan that I have, Parmley's only goes back it goes past the stone wall on the backside of Houghtonville Cemetery, about a third of the way.
Yeah, well, you need both of them, Stan.
Yes, well, yeah, that would be ideal, yes, absolutely.
And I don't know, Abacola never got bagged, that I know of.
So the, so is it, is it, what I'm hearing is that you, we want Bill to um, pursue with Parmley and the other owner there um, getting an acre or two acres or what, three acres of land? Um, is that what we wanna do?
That's what I would recommend. I don't know if everybody else thought it.
Well.
I, I just think that's the one to concentrate on.
I, I um, would like to throw into the discussion at the Cobb Cemetery or West Cemetery, a- as you come up Stagecoach Road and then make that hard turn onto Hall Ranch Road, there's a triangle right there of pine where you get down to the cemetery itself.
Yeah.
Typically, where white pine is growing is a gravelly or sandy soil. That's why the pine's there as a rule. So, and that it's just a little triangular piece. It seems like the soil would be worth looking at. And that triangle piece seems like it would not be a high value for a future house site. Seems like that would be worth looking at that piece.
And I would. She wouldn't sell a piece.
What's that?
She already, this Barclay already indicated she would not sell a piece of that land. She wants to sell it all.
There's more to that piece than that triangle.
Twenty-one acres in there.
Yeah, that used to belong to uh, the Mosley girl. And Arrow, Arrow put a road into that, access into that, and then she died and nothing else was done.
Oh, that's what that is down on uh, Stagecoach going into that?
Yeah.
That was gonna be a house or something?
Yeah.
I saw that, yeah.
But, but that, that, that's not twenty-one acres there. Where's the rest of it?
The whole piece is twenty-one acres.
Including the triangle.
Including the triangle, right. She owns all the way from the edge of that triangle where the two roads come together, all the way down to, I think, uh, probably Mosley or something.
See, I, I personally like the Houghtonville, the Cobb Cemetery site better than the Houghtonville Cemetery site, but.
Land-wise.
But how do we wanna proceed? I mean, we have, we have to make some definitives. Do you wanna, do you wanna proceed with um, the Houghtonville property first? Whether you wanna proceed simultaneously with both?
Wh- what about Muller's?
Well, that's, that's another one. You got Muller and, and Danny, I don't know if you, you you could schedule, he, he said you can go there and dig test beds anytime you want.
Well, I went over with them initially and walked it. And I don't know if you don't want me over there anymore or not or what, but I would think you'd want me and Danny to go over and dig some holes and see what's there.
Well, I, I, I.
Just got the email back saying we had permission, so I just got that last couple days, so it's whenever you wanna go.
Just not, you should do it. John and Danny, go ahead and do it and see if there's gravel there. Because if you get this gravel there, then that's also a potential site for a cemetery as well.
Right.
You know, you've got three sites. Um, I think you should pursue all three and see which one's gonna be the best. And I like the Cobb one only because um, you can have the cemetery across the road. Um, it's easy access and to talk to um, Mr. Peckham, um, to see what he might offer. He might even give the land, you don't know.
He wants to have more land though. If he gives that away, he wants a piece of that land across the street.
Well, he's gotta have it for land use.
Yes.
Right. If you're gonna spend the money on that triangle piece, that's a much nicer piece than the rest of it.
Right.
Well, so, so uh, do I hear that, that we need to instruct Bill that we wanna pursue all three sites?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll go after that. Okay.
And Danny, if, if, whenever you, I'd go over with you anytime you want.
Alright, I know, I will have to look and see, cause I'm off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, cause I'm having another surgery done.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how fast recovery will be, but as soon as I know, um, we can do that, or if you don't mind, I can have Mike go over with you and do it, cause you know where we marked them, but if you don't mind waiting, I'll go with you.
Doesn't make it, I can wait, sure. There's no problem. I got plenty of time.
Alright.
Yeah, there was, there's no time limit on digging the holes there, so there's no issue.
Yep.
Okay, um, do we have any other business?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Oh, thank you. So, um, the subject is the wastewater uh, survey and I'm reporting on behalf of our commission. Uh, we wanna make sure the select board is aware and supportive of the wastewater survey which um, will be launched in November and will cover approximately seventy properties in high priority properties in the village. Uh, the twenty of those properties are uh, belonging to the foundation. And Stan and Chris met with Bob Donalds about these twenty properties and he's gonna be handling those separately, but he is cooperative and supportive of what we're doing in terms of the wast- wastewater survey for both the commercial and the residential properties that fall within the seventy properties that we're surveying. So that leaves fifty surveys that we are going to begin mailing the week of October twenty-sixth. And the surveys will be due back on December first. And as soon as we have the results compiled, I'll be getting in touch with you to report the results.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment?
Uh, I, I got a couple things, Carol.
Go ahead, you have other business on there.
Other business. I never heard anything more about the excess money we had in the cemetery account. That we, if we could use it or what was going on.
The last, the last thing that I knew was that, um, um, I guess whether it be Kim or the um, uh, public trustees of public funds were going to get the uh, the contracts or the original documentation and we were gonna send it over to the attorney for an interpretation of what the original intent for that monies were. And I don't know where that stands.
We haven't really gone much further on it. Uh, it, it's just been awful busy with the new grants coming up and having deadlines and the elections, so. No, I haven't gotten together the trustee of public funds papers for him to take to the attorney to take a look at.
Okay.
Um, but I'll mark that down and try and get on that this week.
There's no rush, Kim. I mean, you know, obviously the elections and all the other stuff are more important right now, so.
I'll get on it though.
Go ahead.
And uh, the other thing was, uh, there was quite a lot of communication back and forth about a sheriff living in down. Then I just kinda dropped and haven't heard no more.
Um, I, I, I think uh, what, the last time I talked to Bill was last week, is that there were no really houses available um, from the foundation. And there were some private uh, sales and I don't know where that, where that stands. I think it's a great idea, but I don't know. I think it's a great idea, but I don't know how to make it happen.
Was, was Bill still in touch, um, Joe, with that sheriff that was interested?
Yes, interested in public.
Yeah, he's been in touch with them right along, just that it, 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 it's a matter of him finding a house that he finds suitable for himself. Because like Joe said, there's nothing for the Wyndham Foundation, but as something keeps popping up or we're aware of a house, we're letting Bill know and Bill's then relaying the message on to the, the sheriff, so I guess it's all what he can do.
Yeah, the house next to me, the log cabin is available, um, after December twenty-eighth.
I think he's, he's also thinking about purchasing. So that's why anything that comes up for sale, we're kinda passing it on. And he is interested more, um, according to Bill, um, the village would be ideal.
Yeah, and I think, I think there were, there were one or two houses in the village, uh, that are privately sale, that are not listed with a real estate. And I think he, I don't know whether Bill has indicated that, communicated that to him or not. Um, but, uh, we can check, I can check with Bill to see if he did. There was a red house, a school near School Street, I think.
Right, Michelle Pape, P-A-P-E.
Right, and there's another one. Um, and I don't know where the other one sits, but, um, and I don't know the status of those houses at, at this moment, either.
Well, North Star Gallery is.
That's all?
Gallery is.
That's all?
That's all?
Well, it's under contract.
On the contract, yeah. And Fort Chim- if everybody's interested, Fort Chimneys is on the contract as well. So.
I just wanted to make a comment for Suzanne's benefit if she's not aware. But there was a point in time when, uh, the foundation offered, uh, a residence to the state police. There was at least three different state police officers and one sheriff that lived in a house near the, um.
The gas station.
Near the gas station. And, and when that, when that happened, it really was helpful. That vehicle would come and go to the residence. It was always a pick, you know, people would see it in town. Um, it was very helpful that the foundation made that available to the law enforcement. And I think there were some people that were hoping possibly something like that could happen again. Um, so that's, I don't know if you were aware that, that that took place.
I don't wanna speak out, speak out of turn. I don't wanna speak out of turn, but I do believe Bill communicated that to Bob Donald and he, there was, they, they showed no interest in that.
Well, I, I, I understand that, but I thought it was important for Suzanne to know that as a board member and, and to know a little history of why that was brought up. Um, that, for several years, um, that was very beneficial, having somebody live in the, in, uh, foundation housing in, in the village.
Yeah, that historical aspect of that is actually what started this conversation, actually.
Well, I know that, but I didn't think Suzanne did and I thought it was important for her to know it.
I, I do appreciate that very much, Al. I did not know that history and I, I think it is important to know it. This, this has a lot to do with availability. Um, there are just no houses available right now.
Understand.
Okay, any other business? John, are you done?
Uh, for now. We'll wait till next time.
Okay. Um, do we have any public comment?
I, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so, I was not at the last meeting, obviously, and I read the minutes. And I, I get the feeling that we are preparing to start having our select board meetings at the, um, Brick Meeting House. Um, I don't, but I don't read that in the minutes that that was decided. So, was that decided at the meeting and not recorded, or is that just discussion?
It is, it has not been decided at time because there was no internet, uh, internet and we waiting to, we were, the board wanted to get, make sure that it was prepared for us. And that's the last thing that we have to discuss today. If you notice on number twelve, it said they didn't, uh, next select board meeting in November, uh, com- a combination of Microsoft team and live. But we have to get, the, the, we have to, the board has to approve that we will have the live portion of it at the Brick Meeting House. The internet is installed, okay? It's all ready to go. And if, if the board approves that, then we will, um, on the next agenda, it'll be there at six o'clock. First, and anybody who wants to go on Microsoft team, will also have the availability to do so. And any select board member who doesn't want to attend in person can turn, can do it via Microsoft term as well.
Okay.
So we need to, we need to get an approval that we would continue to do that. That's, that is, that was never fully discussed because the, we weren't sure there was, the facilities there were available and now they are installed.
Uh, I, I think we should wait, wait to the next meeting because of the election the following day.
That's okay too. We can, we can postpone it until the, I don't have my calendar up here, but what would be in November? Anybody have a calendar handy?
November sixteenth, sixteenth of, fourteen days.
Alright, so then why don't we just postpone the, um, the live meeting to November sixteenth?
Can I just say something about this? Like I, like I say at every single meeting, um, I went in the office and talked to Bill about this too. And I'm assuming that the Historical Society Board has since voted on this to allow this to happen. Um, and number two, is there a cleaning plan for, if you're going to have public meetings there and all that kinda stuff with the COVID? Is there a plan in place for that, since it will be a public, um, room? You know what I'm saying?
Well, if there, if there isn't, there will be and there wasn't a plan when the, because we haven't officially decided. So if we're gonna be on November sixteen, there has to be a, um, a plan, which we will have to, you know, adhere to. And that, that plan will have to be also for the election as well as for any other use of the building. And as far as I know, the, um, the, the building has been conveyed to you, so the, I, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I contacted, I talked to, I contacted Craig, the chair of the Historical Society Board after your last meeting. And he had not, he knew the election was going to take place there, but he said the board had not talked about other meetings being there. That's why I asked Bill. And he was going to get in touch with him as well.
Right, and I believe that they talked to, Bill did talk to Tanya Evans, and I do believe that was clear, so.
And, and Craig on, I, I think it was Thursday.
Craig, Tanya, Tanya's not on the board.
No, 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 but Tanya did talk to the Service, uh, Soil Society. And Bill, Bill sent the memo out, I think it was today or, or Friday, requesting, um, the official permission and the insurance certificate for liability for the town. So obviously, if we don't get that, you don't have the meetings. So, uh, but I'm sure it's gonna be there. I know there is a liability policy, but I, I can't tell you what it's for, how it works, so. So, so that, we're okay to then go, uh, live and, and, uh, Microsoft team on the sixteenth of November? Is that okay? Fine. Is there any other business? No, there's nothing else, so, um, Kim, are you, like, you're gonna have to work with Bill to, to do the COVID necessary cleanup and all that kinda baloney?
We kinda touched base on it a little bit, how we're gonna do the, the cleaning, if we were gonna, you know, get anybody to do the cleaning or will it be ourselves or what's gonna happen?
Alright, but you're, 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 that's on the, in your radar?
Yeah, we, yeah. It was on our radar when he left on Thursday.
Okay, great, okay.
May I just, Mr. Chair, may I just ask a follow-up question to that? Since the, um, since the town already has a plan, the ACC, whatever plan that is, does that plan apply or does there have to be another plan through the Historical Society for the Brick Meeting House specifically?
I, I can't answer that question, but I think we, the town is, is liable and has to follow anything that is recommended by the state. I, I mean, I guess, we have, we don't have a choice, just like we have with the town hall and whatever. We have to, we have to conform to whatever regulations the state has put on public buildings or officials. Is that right, Kim?
Yeah, and, and it's mainly, um, a sign-in sheet, um, for contact tracing, um, wiping down the facility of any place that was touched, um, afterwards. Um, it, it's not really too involved. There's no public restrooms, you know, so. It would be very minimal, but the contact tracing is the biggest part of it, make sure everybody signs in with their phone number.
And, and in the plan, you have to sign, each organization has to assign a quote-unquote health officer? Are you the health officer for the town with respect to the ACCD plan?
I am.
But will you be that for the Brick Meeting House when public meetings are held there? Or would that be a responsibility to the Historical Society? That's what I'm not quite clear on.
Yeah, no, I probably wouldn't be for all meetings that would be held there. Um, that'd be something we're gonna have to discuss.
What about, uh, Rich Thompson? He's the health officer, so wouldn't he be responsible maybe?
But the problem is, it has to be somebody that's on site. They actually have to be there. So, that's why I'm like, I don't know if you'd want, you, you're gonna designate one person for all meetings. Because that means that person needs to be there at every meeting. Um.
Well, yeah, responsible, whoever the meeting is would have to be responsible for buying a person. If it's a town function, uh, we could do that as, as you being the, uh, uh, the safety officer, cause you already are for the town.
Right. And, and I'm sure you can designate anybody for each particular meeting, like if the wastewater committee wanted to have a meeting there, you would name someone as your safety officer or your health officer.
It would just happen to you, where are the protocols?
Yeah.
But our, 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 but, I mean, when, uh, when the wastewater committee has talked about going back live, which I don't see, foresee anytime soon, we've been, even to stuff our envelopes and everything like that, we've been envisioning, cause we're such a small committee, just going upstairs in the town hall. Is that not gonna be available for live commission or committee meetings? Um, and do we need to think about moving?
The town hall is not really set up, um, for, if you're gonna, if you're gonna bring in fact TV or something like that and for, and for Zoom. It's, it's more difficult because it's, you know, we don't have the, that, as I understand it, Kim, is that correct?
Right, yeah.
But Sue, are you just referring to the five meeting, you know, five people meeting for the wastewater thing?
Yeah, and that's, that's what, that's what I think that's what.
Not enough town, uh, attended.
But you have, but you're a public meeting, so you have, it has to be open to the pub.
Right. Yeah, that's the only thing. You gotta be conscious of opened up to the public, not handicap accessible up there. And if you were to move it downstairs, then you would not find enough space in there for even five or six people to fit into Bill's office six feet apart.
Yeah.
So you just gotta keep that in mind when you guys do meet, that you might have someone that just wants to sit in on your meeting. Or someone who can't make it upstairs.
The Brick Meeting House is available for any, any committee, so if you wanna, Susan, if you wanted to have a committee meeting there in, in live or a live Zoom or however you wanna do it, um, it's certainly available and you've got all the, all the necessary, you know, internets and everything else and, uh, handicapped access and, and in and out and all that stuff.
And even if you're not gonna live, if you're not gonna Zoom it, it still has the open enough space if you were to have someone.
Right.
A group come in.
And, and just, just fill me in as a, as a board member of the foundation. I believe we made a donation to make the town hall handicapped accessible. Has that been kinda put on the back burner now? What, what's the status of, of that funding?
I think, it's still sitting in a reserve, but I think it's kind of been put on the back burner. We did do a lot of research into it, but at this point, you can't even get contractors, you can't get engineers, that, none of them wanna enter buildings. You can't even get Xfinity to come in because, or VTEL. They're not supposed to enter the buildings.
Yeah, that's very understandable. Thank you.
I think we're kinda just sitting and waiting and, yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're all stuck in a way. Thank you. Great explanation.
Okay, if there's nothing else, um, a motion to adjourn?
I'll move. I'll move.
Uh, all in favor, say aye. Who's the second, by the way? Who was the second?
I did.
Okay, John seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Alright.
Post. Well, thank you so much for attending tonight. Thank you, Kim. You did a great job.
Okay, thank you, Wendy.
Bye, guys.
See you, everybody.
Thank you very much.